Yeah, just a little bit.
You ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Uh Tammy, we will go ahead and get our uh school board meeting started. It is four o'clock. And we are going to invite Casey Smith up to lead our.
I have the allegiance to the God of the United States of America. And to the Republic where worship stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Okay, so we will do our roll call. Uh Tammy, we have all board members present. Scott is via Zoom. And um we'd like to announce Dr. Yuck is sick this evening, so he's not physically in attendance here with us today. We will move on to the appointment of our new superintendent. Well.
I can go get her.
No.
Oh.
I would like to.
She's got a later part, so um we would like to do the appointment of the superintendent.
I'll I'll motion to um appoint her as our new superintendent.
So all those in favor of appointing Dr. Skinner as our new superintendent, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Uh now we'll move on to the review of the super superintendent's contract, which you'll find it copy here in your board packet. Yes, if everyone read it, it'd be straightforward from what Scott and I were taking to the table, but if there are any, yeah, anything for you guys that Scott and I followed what we talked originally about, so. All set? Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the Dr. Skinner's employment contracts, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Scott, can you try talking again?
Sure.
Okay, okay, you you weren't, we didn't hear your last vote, so.
Oh, I voted, I voted yes.
Okay. Okay, so we'll move on to the um one point five agenda additions, deletions, revisions, or or on to approval.
Scott.
Scott, you have any changes or deletions? No, okay.
Um I move that we approve the agendas additions, deletions, and revisions. One point five.
All those in favor of um accepting the agenda as written, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh we will invite Mr. Bates, uh Jim Bates, up for um a school presentation.
Welcome. Nice to see such a great turnout and see our family faces, and so thank you for making the effort. For those of you that may not know, uh both Mr. Bates and I share the job. And it's a, it's a unique opportunity for both of us and that we love it so much that early on, we said that we would be happy to do that again next year. We talked to Mr. Weeks and HR, and we love the kids. Families are just fantastic to work with. It's been a joy being able to work together as a couple. Has so many unique leverages to it, uh and uh I don't know if Stacy will completely agree about having to work with me. Uh but we talk about the school constantly and whether it's the weekends or evenings, and so it's pretty fun to be able to get to teach with her. Because it took a month and a half to reteach me on how to teach again, so she did that by getting me started and then headed Texas for her. The weekend saying, you'll be fine. So. I think I'm I'm fine at this point. Thanks. She's a, she's a great teacher, and it's fun to be able to work with her, and let her do the, you know, Stacy have done that already, so. But we want to just give you a small little snapshot of of something the kids were working on. We've got a few songs, though. They've sung one of them previously. They sing it for part of their studies. Right now, we're getting ready to launch into the big organ trail study. We just finished with.
Long term, mainly about the. We just finished that.
Pretty peppy, but just see a little snapshot of what they've been working on. They'll be singing a couple of those at our year-end celebration, too, which will come out too fast uh in June. So with that, we'll bring the kids up and teach it to. Fair warning on that, it's a song I was singing along with Hobo Jim. He's got a pretty. Jump in.
Will we, in Alaska, let's take that stand alone. There's a dog that's run from that which you know. And it's curling mace with a light and pace and still brings to well. Each northern night, but it's no, yes, it's called yonder on trail. Well, Jim has been a good thing, dog, and son that's built so fine, and let me race those miles to know one thousand forty-nine. Then when I get back to my home, hey, I can tell my tale. I've been, I've been, I've been, I've been around. Well, the race won't be easy, for the master's on the trail, and some of them make it, and some of them fail. But just to run that previous stage, I never hardly breathe, and along with them, when the dogs are running across town, we're still free. We'll get in a team and a good thing, dog, and son that's built so fine, and let me race those miles to know one thousand forty-nine. Then when I get back to my home, hey, I can tell my tale. I've been, I've been, I've been, I've been around.
Was that all heard?
It's a little bit, it's a little bit. And so I'm so pretty. It's a little white whale on the go. It's water, worm, it's your mama who's with you, so we have a lot of beauty. With our young, an open slate, where you die, it's all so late, waves rolling, waves roll out. Water's breaking out, it's first time. Sing for all your friends, we like to do. When it's dark in your home and dead, girl, snug in your water bed. The sky and the stars are out, but I play with my. With our sun, another day we got a young swim, deep, waiting, and baby, look at him, baby, for the sea. So wild, so pretty, brother, above and see. Just a little white whale on the go. Yes, the little white whale on the go.
So you notice, this is a drone song, which means it's only one horn, and so the whole school.
Yeah, thank you for that. You guys are great. Thank you again for that. That was beautiful. Okay, so we will move on to the.
I motion to approve.
All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carrie, we'll move on to you with our curriculum adoption committee update.
Hi, everybody. I am just here in your packet. You have the names of three different, or names of people on three different committees for curriculum um review. And then you also have board policy IIA dash AR, which kind of describes in case you needed a refresher around what the board-appointed review committee does, or the process around adopting curriculum. So I am asking today um for you to approve all the names that have volunteered for each one of the committees, both uh science, math, and English language proficiency.
I move.
Yeah, are are you able to navigate with all of them for each of these nights you've already set, or they're aware of?
Yep. Okay. Yep.
I'm going to approve the many selections. It looks like you found a lot of people. That's wonderful.
Yeah.
That's. Do we want to uh so all motion to approve or adopt the science?
Yeah, we want to read them, so um so if you want to do both ones, you.
For the science, for Barbara New, Eric Osborne, Debbie Wood, Calista Song-Stan, Michael Custer, Holly Haynes, and Jennifer Abernathy.
All those in favor of approving Barbara New, Eric Osborne, Debbie Wood, Calista Song-Stan, Michael Custer, Holly Haynes, and Jennifer Abernathy for our science curriculum adoption committee, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Um I move to appoint uh for math, K through eight, Karina Call, Debbie Wood, Calista Song-Stan, Jordan
Rasher.
Rasher, thank you, Shelley Courier, and Jennifer Abernathy. The math curriculum K through eight adoption committee.
All those in favor of approving Karina Call, Debbie Wood, was the Song-Stan, Jordan Rasher, Shelley Courier, and Jennifer Abernathy for our math K through eight curriculum adoption committee, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
We go on to the next one. That's like, my, just rose up. Can you give me just two seconds?
Yeah.
Good. Thank you.
Well, we have a really long list.
If you don't mind.
We'll keep going and we'll wait for you after this. That works. Because you have a list of the names, that right?
Yes. I'm gonna help you.
Yes, thank you.
Louder broom, Riley Campbell, Karina Call, Maria.
Campuzano.
Campuzano, Teresa Ortiz.
Baldemar.
I couldn't tell if that was a R on him.
Yeah.
Lululepe Cruz.
Elvia.
Elvia Sanchez, Silver, Robert.
Robles.
Robert, Roberto.
Calvio.
Calvio, Lina.
Villa Lobos.
Villa Lobos, Daisy.
Reynoso.
Agrena, Tapia. And.
Yozet, Villasana.
How do you pronounce it?
Villasana.
To the English language proficiency committee.
I'll help.
Are you okay, Tammy? Um it's still working on it, so yes.
Oh wait, you're good, Tammy.
Okay. It's just really slow. I'll make.
Sorry.
So um all those in favor of appointing Riley Campbell, Karina Call, Maria
Campuzano.
Teresa Ortiz, Baldemar Ortiz. Lululepe Cruz, Elvis Sanchez, Sylvia
Robles.
Robles. Roberto.
Calvio.
Calvio. Uh Lorena.
Villa Lobos.
Villa Lobos, Daisy Reynoso.
Yep. Adriana.
Adriana Tapia.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm sorry, had to.
Yozet.
Yozet.
Villa Sana.
Villa Sana. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
Okay, Joel, we will move on to you for our strategic plan reports.
Yeah, Carrie was supposed to take twenty minutes, so guys, we have some bonus time to talk about our goals. So just to put everything in context, if you remember, we set these goals, I want to say January, February. Um we usually report on these quarterly, so this is, we just finished up trimester two at the end of March. So all this data um is based off trimester two, so I'll just go ahead and get started. This is our first quarterly boards report, so feel free to stop me if you have questions, you want to go deeper in something. Um what you'll find in your packet, of course, I've got a chart for you. Um so this, I, these are actually my notes, and I figured it would actually really helps kind of guide things along, so feel free to follow along. Um you got a chart in your packet. Uh so with that, uh the board set goals in January around three key areas: instruction, community, and facilities, uh safety and operations. Do you want to give a big gold star to Mr. Jim Bates? He's got his Kirk County School District strategic plan hanging up, right, when you uh walk in, so Mr. Bates, well, well done. Or, sorry, Mrs. Bates. Probably. So what you'll see, we set these goals, and traditionally, how we reported these to the board quarterly is through a stoplight system, um green being one. Yeah. We just wanted to make sure we could see you, Mr. Cooper. Uh so I'll give a report on each of our indicators. We have three key goals. Uh under each goal is about five to eight uh objectives that we've set. Just to go over big picture, so green light, this is not uh overly scientific. Green light means we either, uh the objective is complete, or there's a plan in place, and we're making good progress. Uh if it's a yellow, we have a plan, but we need to make more progress. We're not quite where we need to be, or we need to make adjustments to that plan for improvement. And then finally, a red means we've got lots of work that needs to be done in this area. Um I always give this disclaimer, we get, we don't get paid any more, any less, based on on how we rate these. This is just an objective assessment, um how how we feel how we're doing. So with that, I'm actually gonna start. Uh I thought we're gonna be a little tight on time, so I'm gonna start with goal three, because I think we'll be able to go through goal three and two quicker, and then we can spend a lot of the meat of our conversation, talking around our instructional goal. So it's uh it had goal three in your packet. We've got our eight objectives. Um objective number one, I'll start with the ones that we marked green. So uh objective three point one, complete a successful superintendent search and hiring process. This one could have been really awkward if Dr. Skinner didn't show up just now. So um we're gonna give that a green light. Uh that has been uh completed. Uh we're excited. Uh goal three point three, maintain a strong and stable financial position. You'll see in your uh chart, there's a links there. Um that will take you to the monthly reports that Anna does on the budget, and you can hold on to this electronic document. It's been emailed to you. So that way, if you want to go back and look, um get the finance report to you every uh every month. Uh and then upcoming, uh the next steps around this one is uh the twenty-four, twenty-five budget committee begins April twenty-fifth and April thirtieth, so that will be the next steps around keeping that strong and stable financial position. Uh our next green light on that is uh enhance safety and security measures in all school buildings. Not gonna pull up that link, but uh if you click that link that's in your board packet uh when you're at your computer, that'll take you to the list. There's about fifteen things, uh safety improvements that Leland and his team have uh already completed this school year. Um at the end of each year, and Leland looks through other security and safety measures, and comes up with the plan for next year, so that'll be kind of the next step on that. And then finally, uh this is actually a completely new initiative that the board asked for in January. Uh increase the ongoing training for Kirk County School District Athletic Coaches through quarterly coaches summits. Uh Mr. Cooper, you'll see I got the apostrophe right on uh this one now, so uh no need to uh fix that. So this has actually been a really exciting project. Uh I worked with Mr. Bonner and Mr. Huffman on this. The board asked that we provide more training, just just like we do for our teachers, where it's not just one training at the start of year, but ongoing training for our coaches. Uh Mr. Bonner and Mr. Huffman have put together a plan. You'll see the the dates, uh May seventh, uh twenty twenty-four, so this spring, Rob will host the first uh coaches summit. Uh they'll talk about division for coaches summits and improvement. Um we've set four dates, so quarterly next year, August thirteenth. They'll work with our coaches. The topics right now are communication and fundraising. Um in October, looks like we'll talk about relationships and equipment, and then next February, they'll talk about utilizing assistant coaches, so they're identifying key topics that our coaches will uh be working with and and providing ongoing professional development of that. So that's something the board asked for, that uh Anna was able to 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 um we got some grant funds, I think we're able to allocate some money to to pay coaches to be there, so that way they're getting current coaching uh throughout the year.
So Joel, are they having their first meeting, May seventh?
May seventh, yeah, we uh we kind of jumped all over this one, so. Uh any questions on those four that we just went over? All right, let's shift to our yellow lights. So these are ones where we're making progress, but not quite where we need to be. Um assess district facilities through long-range planning and explore uh potential bond options. This is one where uh I linked in your packet, the uh bond informational packet from the January twenty-ninth spectacle, spectacle session, where we went through what's what's in the bond. Um our next steps around this one would be the actual bond election, so that'll be in May coming up, so um we're making some progress there. Need to need to kind of take this thing to the finish line. Um next up would be uh three point six, ensure all students have access to a school counselor. We actually, this one, I'm gonna say we could shift and be like a yellowish-greenish, because uh shout out to Mr. Hayes, who's here, uh him, myself, and Mr. Weeks met with OSU Cascades about their counseling program to try to get a direct pipeline, so we have a potential candidate there. Um I believe we just approved a new hiring of a counselor for next year from Montana, so Marcus Dumson, great recruiting, so we look like we will have uh two fully-staffed counselors at the middle school uh at this point, so that's a big improvement. Um that was something I know the board was really uh really adamant about, especially with all the mental health concerns we're seeing. Um so that's something we're excited about. Uh we believe we'll have two, and and uh that way, that counselor we shifted over from the high school, we'll be able to go back to the high school. Um so any questions there?
Do we still have that other applicant that Jay was talking about? I thought we had two out-of-state applicants.
I think, I I think there's still, like, we have one for sure, and then we have two that we're still working on that that look likely, so that.
Okay.
And I'll tell you.
We still have more applicants that we're going.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and I believe that position was posted for two years without any qualified applicants, so it's big, we really worked. Kind of pound the pavement and shake the trees, and we're able to find some counselors, so.
And then this program you guys are doing with OSU Cascade, so will that kind of give. Teachers like better, or counselors that are finishing their program, like internship type?
Yeah.
Or do they need to work under licensed counselors?
So, yeah, so they're traditionally go through an internship period where they're working under a licensed counselor, so because we have a full-time licensed counselor there for next year. That means we would be able to, if needed, bring in an intern, but we believe we also might be able to just hire a fully licensed counselor, not just an intern.
So out of OSU, can we?
We believe so, yeah, yeah, so I think Marcus is meeting with a candidate on Friday, I want to say, from OSU Cascade. So, and Jay and I and Marcus met with their program coordinator to hopefully like build that relationship to where we kind of start to get more applicants as, as needed, so. Our next steps, finalizing the recruitment, and then, you know, one of the things as we dug into this was. Our counselors, just like kids support, they need to have colleagues and support too, and that's why we wanted to make sure we had two counselors there, so they're not overwhelmed. Case loads and stuff, so we're kind of refining some systems there as well. And then finally, three point seven, connect all students to at least one extracurricular team, club, or opportunity. Like Mr. Cooper says, this might be one of our biggest safety benefits, is if we can get kids connected, they've got friends. They've got an activity like they do, they've got a reason to show up to school, we believe that really helps with our school's safety, and is great for kids overall, with their attendance, engagement. So I've got some numbers there for the middle school, in the fall, they had two hundred and fourteen spots filled in their clubs and sports. In the winter, they had two hundred and seventeen students participating. The total number of unique kids was three hundred and thirty, so that's over half our kids at the middle school are connected to some club or sport, which is awesome. At the high school, I need to get that phone number, but I know in the winter, they had three hundred and fifty-five students signed up for a club or a sport. And in the spring, Mr. Huffman was able to give me those numbers, they have two hundred and ninety-nine students signed up, so six hundred students, which makes up about two-thirds of the high school, so. Really encouraging, but I think this is one thing that we have to keep the gas on, and making sure that. And I try to get creative and find as many grants as we can to expand our clubs. One of my dreams is to get an after-school bus option, because right now, the students rely on just bus transportation. They might not be able to stay later if a parent can't pick them up, so wanting to make sure that we can maybe explore those transportation options, so a kid could just catch an after-school. Or after-club's bus, so that's kind of a good next step. We also want to reestablish our partnership with Creek County Parks and Rec, particularly at the elementary level, a lot of our sports run through Parks and Rec, so we want to make sure that we have a strong relationship with them. And then returning to a consistent participation tracking process, so that'll make pulling these numbers a lot less, a lot lighter lift on our administrators.
So Joel, your total numbers are those throughout the year that aren't sports related, so when you say?
That includes clubs and athletics. All right, and we got a red, guys, so our red is three point four. Establish and maintain effective clearly written policies to help guide district operations. And the reason this is red, and we're actually super fortunate, Anna discovered, I want to say through. Looking into a policy that OSBA, who we contract with to upload and maintain our policies when you go website, had somehow. Uploaded an old policy or another district's policy for ours. So we are completing them, we're doing an audit to look through everything that they've uploaded to make sure they are correct with what's been approved by our board, so. Tanya Howard's doing an awesome job going through policy and policy, Tammy's helping out as well, going through to make sure that they have uploaded the correct policies for us. So that's a big deal, so we're, our next steps, we're going to do a board review and update policies in April and October work session, so in talking with Chair Rumble. We are wanting to not bring like ten policies every meeting, but rather have work sessions, where then you guys can focus on the, on like a group of policies. So we'll start that in April, we're told the April OSBA. Policy update has fifty, fifty new policies to review, so we're going to have to figure out, that's unmanaged, unrealistic. For the board to under, like, fully grasp fifty policies, so we're going to look through what we can do to make sure that's something that makes sense for you guys, and make sure you can really get good eyes on all the policies.
And that's in April? No, they, oh, go ahead, sorry.
We have an April twenty-ninth work session.
Right.
OSBA generally releases batches of policies in both October and April.
Okay.
So that's why we set a work session.
We just.
For those.
We didn't know it'd be this large, so now we have to get a different game plan for how we now get fifty reviews done. So it might be another, an extra work session where it's just policies, but Joel and I want to look at trying to maybe group them like, like policies on night. So, yeah, so it's not jumping all over, but it's a bit easier to review kind of this category and this category. So we didn't realize it would be.
Yeah.
Yeah, Tammy, when she got, she was like, it's fifty, I'm like, okay.
It's usually like the team was high, and then they just came with, I want to say earlier this last week, so. And then a next step on this one that we've just began preliminary conversations is maybe a shift away from OSBA hosting our policies on our website. If we're running into issues and we're paying them to host it, and we're finding errors, that's something we want to explore, and whether that's the best partnership for us for this particular task, so. Talking with Eric about different options we have to maybe host our own policies, or explore what else is out there.
What is the, I guess, the procedure in that, are they, you just submit them link to a web, to an email address?
Yeah, so typically, do you want to explain to me?
Yeah, so once you approve the policy, I take that approved policy and email it to my contact at OSBA, and then they're supposed to replace the one. And update the website with the updated one, making the changes that we've included, so. Right now, what I'm doing is going back, and once that new policy gets uploaded, I'm going there making sure that they captured all their changes. What we've seen in the past is maybe they capture one or two, but then they don't get all of the changes, so sometimes it's taking a little bit of back and forth to make sure that all the approved changes are being captured until we have the correct.
Yeah, so we're.
Looking in a way that we could do that maybe more in-house or?
Yeah, we could just host our own page through our technology department, and it'd be our website, so that way, we know it's all internal, and we're not getting errors with, is kind of the plan. The one kind of hesitation is, there's a really good search function where you're looking at like the keyword, and you can pull up all the policies that we have on drones, for example. So we want to make sure we have those capabilities, so that our community can look up. Phrases and policies, so we're just kind of doing that, making sure we can provide a good service before we pull the plug on, on OSBA hosting.
Okay.
Yeah, just an idea, so. Any questions around goal three?
Do we know at the elementary club level, I know like Taylor gave.
Yeah.
In her presentation, they had, it seemed like hundreds of clubs, so that's maybe a little bit of an exaggeration, but they had a club, it seemed like for. I mean, almost anything you could think of, so I'm just curious on that front.
Yeah.
How would that work?
As long as our internet works decently out here, yeah, there's no student names. So I linked on your chart, so if you open this on your computer, it links to the club menus.
They have, okay.
So we were able to get a grant, and we use something called the Student Investment Account Funds, where we give each school about. Eight to ten club spots, and what that means is, the principal then goes to their staff and says, hey, which staff members out there want to start a club? And staff say, you know, whether it's, I know there's like Dungeons and Dragons at the high school, elementary. Chess. If we have good internet, it'd be pretty fancy, I could show you their menu right there, but I think our internet's a little slow right now. So typically, our elementaries have about ten club options, three or four per trimester. And then a lot of, one of the things I talked about was making sure we're connected with Parks and Rec, because that's what a lot of our kids get connected with, whether it's soccer or basketball. And we just want to make sure that that relationship that we have with Parks and Rec is really strong, so that we know that we can kind of hand kids off to them, and we know they're connected some way, because. Just like you've seen with like Creek County, like Matt Club, or, you know, soccer. The more that we can have programs starting at the elementary level and going up, the more competitive our high school teams are going to be, so. Any other questions? All right, let's jump now to, we'll go to goal number two, which is all around the community. So we've got five objectives here, our greens are two point one, conduct quarterly board superintendent community listening sessions. I think so, I've been to, we scheduled four, I think we've done three, I want to say. Steve and Jen and I were at the February one, the second one, and I think we had a strong turnout of four people. Two of which were Boy Scouts, which was awesome.
Yes.
And then Cheyenne and Scott, I want to say we're at the March, the most recent one, we had probably about twenty to thirty people, I would say, so that one was really well attended. We also, the next one will be May twentieth, and I believe it's Cheyenne and Jessica, I want to say, so. And then a question the board will want to look at as we plan next year is, are these something we want to continue the community listening sessions quarterly? So that'll be something that we can talk about our July work sessions as we review these goals. Our next objective, three point, or sorry, two point three, improve family and community access to school curriculum and library resources. So some Carrie Longbach's been busy making sure we have a curriculum library, that's new, where any community member, any parent can come into the district office, and she has. All the curriculums, syllabi for all our courses, any community members ever interested, just get ahold of Carrie Longbach, and she'll invite you. If our internet worked, I do have a picture of it, is the link on that, so just, it is a real thing, I don't think anyone's ever taken us up on it, but if anyone's interested, oh. Had one person picked us up on it, but it's there, and all are welcome to come check if they just want to see what curriculums we have.
I use it regularly, Joel.
Carrie uses it time. But you kind of get paid to use. And then we also have a link there to our library database access. Mr. Ryan's done an awesome job troubleshooting that, so it's user-friendly for parents, so folks want to know what's in our libraries, it's all accessible online. You don't have to be a parent, you can be a community member, and access that through our website. And then finally, three point, sorry, two point four, provide weekly school and district communication to CCSB families. The link there, Mr. Carr has an awesome webpage that I didn't know about until I asked him, that has. The most recent three weekly newsletters, monthly newsletters, and staff newsletters. So that way, if you miss something, or you're interested in what's going on, you can click that link, and it'll take you to it, and anyone publicly can access that as well.
Where do they find that link?
It is under, I want to say, if you go to the district website, under Communications Department, or it's under Staff, I want to say. Yeah, we'll check it, yeah. I'll get that, I know if you click that link, it takes it to you, so I know it's on the district website, I'm not just sure what some heading. Okay, next, our one yellow light is two point two, which is increase the number of volunteers and awareness of volunteers opportunities in school. One thing that we've done is, is in talking with the board and talking with staff, COVID. Was a horrible travesty for our schools in the sense that it blocked parents out, it blocked community members out, where they had to go through all these hoops to become a volunteer. That's been, done a huge disservice to kids where we're now wanting to, there's no more requirements for anything, we want to get community and family back in schools, helping students. So we've created a new volunteer interest form that will roll out later this spring. And we're working with principals to identify additional opportunities for volunteers. So one of our next steps, we're going to update our volunteer website, we created this new form that I would show you if our internet was a little flickered. We're also working on, we have pretty strict procedures, so that no adult in our building is unsupervised with kids. As well as we want to make sure those procedures are tight, and then we want to help volunteers, maybe whether they're helping students with reading or studying. Making it really clear that anyone can come into, anyone that's, you know, passed the background check, they know what to do when they come into school, so they can effectively help teach kids, whether it's. Reading to them, or whether it's teaching them phonics or flashcards, so we're working with principals to figure out what do those procedures look like, so that they can be effective volunteers in our schools, so. Those are things that we'll be developing over the next couple of months, and report out at the next. The next meeting. One thing that I want to say, Cheyenne, we've, I think you've been contacted by various community members, or sorry, community organizations, interested in. The board members speaking at their groups to recruit volunteers, which would be awesome, like, you know, whether it's the Kulanis or. The Eagles?
We had the Republican Party, the Democratic Party want us to come speak and get on their agenda. To bring like volunteer lists, and what they can do to help with reading, and present some options for them to help volunteer, like in the schools and help out, but. They're interested in bond issues, like what they would like to see on the bond, but in order to go out, like if we went out two at a time, we'd have to have. Approval from the board to okay us to go to these organizations.
So maybe at the end of this presentation, we'll ask for a motion to give approval, and we can figure out the logistics. The Democrats and Republicans are Republican, they're both asking for this, for getting involved, I think we want to take advantage of that, so that would be, that'd be awesome.
Joel, do you know where we're at on the smart reading programs in all of our elementary schools?
Yeah, I know it's in Crooked River, and I think this initiative is, is meant to fill those gaps at the other elementary, so my, my goal would be that we have. Volunteers in schools, reading with kids at all our schools next year, from, you know, hopefully day one.
And I, I think I don't want to overstep. Mine speaking, but within the smart reading program in particular, they're having a really hard time with that program out of Ben, like. With volunteers and some funding issues and whatnot, so we felt, or Joel thought it was a good idea as well, if we can. Make sure that all the schools are getting supplemented, until maybe some of their kinks get worked out, to make sure we have volunteers in reading. Maybe doing some in-house programs, so that none of the, none of the schools are left without a program for helping with reading. Am I?
Yeah.
Is that correct?
And here's a bonus, this is something I'm working on that I think would be really cool, I read a lot of research on. Getting fathers and father figures involved in the schools makes a huge difference. So that'll be another push that I think we'll try to develop next year, is an intentional push to get fathers and father figures in schools to work with kids as well, because I think that can really improve their academics as well. Any questions? This last one, it's yellow, but I gave it a little bit of red, so it's more of an orange, so increase family participation at conferences. So spring conferences are coming up, April eighteenth and nineteenth. We'll have, we'll get back to tracking how many students have a guardian representative at conferences, so that's something we'll start this year, or sorry, start this spring. We also should see schools are sending out their individual communications around, you know, how to sign up for conferences and whatnot. But I think this is one, kind of getting back to our volunteers, that I really want to keep the board to keep on their radar, where we have to continue to push parents. Of, for all students to get involved in their child's education, I think that is one of our huge ticket items that we have to keep the focus on, to getting our parents involved. So that'll, that'll be one that we kind of, I hope can carry over to next year. Any questions around goal two?
Yeah, it looks like you have back to school nights on the.
Back to school nights, yes, so that was under two point three, so tentatively planned, we talked with our administrators. Chair Rumble, I know this was one that he wanted to make sure we got out there, so our elementary back to school nights are looking tentatively to be on, on that Thursday, August twenty-nine. Twenty twenty-four, and then our middle school, high school will be that first day of freshmen and sixth graders, which would be, I think, Tuesday, September third. So those are the kind of current plans, and families will learn about those through newsletters, back to school packets, social media, so we'll make sure to get the word out. And we put them on separate nights this year, so families that have multiple kids, so that was, that was a request.
So Joel, on the smart reading programs with supplementing, is there a way that, like, the high school kids that do like TA and stuff like that, might be able to be. Like in a program like this, where?
Yeah, so I'll actually talk about that under goal one, where, yeah, we're looking to partner with, I mean, actually Chelsea Hertz. One of our English high school teachers is working with, I want to say Steen's pillar right now, to figure out scheduling logistics, to potentially send high schoolers down to work with. Elementary students on their phonics and whatnot, kind of like that star, star reading model, so. It's good when you ask questions, because it gives me a chance not to talk, so I. It's good when you ask questions, cuz it gives me a chance not to talk, so I uh questions are are more than welcome. All right, let's jump to our last area, uh instruction. So this is where a lot of the meat of our board goals are, uh let's start with our greens. Um increase the number, uh one point three, increase number of instructional assistants providing academic support. I had Jay pull those numbers, so uh last school year, we had fifty-three IA positions. Um this school year, we have sixty-nine, so if my math's right, uh sixteen percent uh increase from last year on that one, so I know that was a big. Uh board goal, uh one thing I wanna highlight though, cuz I I don't think just having the numbers is enough, and Jen, I think this is something you brought up where. Let's make sure not only we have aides, but they're trained well, so it's not just a warm body, that they know exactly what to do, that we're giving them the proper training and skills. So that when they're working with a kid, that they are improving their reading, they're improving their literacy and their math, so that's something that I think we'll work on. Um hopefully bringing in some ideas from Texas uh for next year on how we can best get those those folks trained up, so.
Thank you.
No problem.
And were these, were the new hires spread across the district, or did we find that we put them mainly like? You know, at elementary, did we spread an elementary, middle high, what did we do with the extras?
The new ones were mainly elementary, uh working with the board, I I wanna say mainly uh the lower grades, K one. Uh yeah, K one, two, three, so uh primarily with the elementary, and we are trying. Um another one of the board goals, we'll talk about in a second, is horizontal alignment of staff, so we are really looking at all our schools to make sure that it's equitable. Um that proportionally, there's the right number based on how many students the school, the school has, or the the kids needs. Uh let's go to one point six, uh implement a high quality AP program and increase uh the number of students passing the AP exams. Uh this is one I'll I'll make sure to email the board too, cuz I really wanna show this, uh and I can't if the internet's not working, um are, I wanna say. I wanna say we're at sixty-three percent of our AP tests were three or above, which is the highest we've had in five years, and that was. Uh and the amount of tests was about normal, so we are trending in a good direction. Um that's mainly based on the hard work, I think, of our high school teachers, as well as we started that AP committee. Um I think they actually even met last week, there's a link, uh that link will take you to their notes, their ongoing notes, uh any quarterly. Um the next steps on this one, I I I would propose that we keep that AP committee going next year, just to keep the focus on improving. Um our AP program and making sure students are passing those assessments. Um next up, three point seven, um provide a robust career and technical edge ed education. Always get to the midway through this one, I talk a lot at the board goal, so uh career and technical education courses and industry certification, so. Ryan Cochran provides a, uh every other month, he provides an update. Uh that is linked to on here, so you can go back and look at all the different CTE programs and what they're doing. Um there are also that shock grant, uh students helping our community, that was the, I wanna say. Two hundred or four hundred thousand dollars that Facebook gave uh to help them fix up various community uh nonprofits in the in the. Um community, so that one, I believe, is a interview from Central Oregon Daily, that's here today. Uh where they fixed up the Humane Society and what they've done, so really, really cool project. Um definitely go check that out, and they also just finished their eighth grade transition day last week, where they invite all the eighth graders in the high school. And they get a mini lesson at at, I think, all nine of our CTE strands, so. Their middle school is gonna, you know, kinda build some excitement around what they're gonna be able to do with the high school, and um that, then they sign up for their elective, so really cool. Um definitely green might go on there. Uh and then one point eight, increase the number of students earning college credit through dual credit courses. Um Mr. Huffman and his team at the high school, they've implemented a new dual credit tracking system. Um Mr. Cooper and I have worked on this over the last couple of years, uh where you have a a senior graduate, and then you have to. Dig around and hope they remember all the different college courses they've taken while in high school, and it just was a mess. So I think after uh Mr. Cooper pushing for two or three years, we finally have created a system where internally, we are tracking that, so then when a kid goes to. Um graduate, that we can print off, here are all your courses from the seven different colleges that we articulate with, so. Um that's in place that year and or this year, and uh Ms. Van Rokel and Mr. Huffman have had a great job getting that going, and that should really help parents and save parents a lot of money.
So, Joy, I have a question on the CT, is there a way that we could um kind of see the pathways? It's great that we have robust programs, but can we see the pathways of, you know, when they start here, when they finish? What are they leaving our school with, what, you know, it's not like, it's great to take one or two classes, but do we have any that like from start to finish? You're leaving with a certification that says, hey, you can go be this, or you can go do this.
Yeah, the Oregon Department of Ed actually makes a track, whether they take a se- a sequence, so we'll, we can get that data very easily.
Do we know what our sequence is, if they take them all, what they can do with that?
Yeah, so um at the July board meeting, we actually present uh for the whole year. How many industry certifications that that students earned? So, which is really important, cuz that was one of our big goals, is that students leave high school with, let's say it's welding, for example, that they've passed a welding certification. That then can walk into an employer and say, uh I I can already start it at this point, so that really helps students, so.
Yeah.
Um that's something that we'll report to in July.
Okay.
Any other questions on on our greens? Let's uh jump into our yellows, so um let's go to one point one, all students proficient in reading, writing, math. And then the board actually asked in February that we add social studies and science on here. Um I'm gonna start with uh grades nine through twelve and uh, I guess they can't see down here, um. So what what you're looking at, where it says ELA, math, science, social studies, those are the percentage of students, so we looked at all trimester two grades. And we said, what percentage of students were proficient, so uh I I've set it at a C or better, so that means you. You passed your your science class with a C or better, so those are the percentages there. And then on the writing, uh that ninety-one point two, that's how many high schoolers passed uh their winter writing uh. Work sample, so ninety-one percent of students pass their work samples, and those are graded by their English teachers, um using using a rubric.
Is that all grades?
Yep, that'd be grades nine through twelve, um another thing we did, uh that's kinda become a practice is, I wanna say even last week. Uh so last week, Mr. Huffman, uh Ms. Jonas, Ms. Kulak and I go through every student that is off track on credits. And come up with an individual plan, so um we're doing that as well, so this shows, you know, how kids are doing grade wise, as well as. Uh making sure every kid that's not progressing or getting behind on credits has a a plan to get caught up. Let's go to the middle school, um same measure, uh that's the number of students, or sorry, the percentage of students that were past. That particular course with a C or better, so for example, English Language Arts, seventy-eight point seven students passed with a C or better. Uh the writing is fifty-eight point three, that's very, and and I kinda look back at how we've done in the past. And what you'll look, if you look from K to twelve, Kirk County School District Writing, you'll see uh. At kindergarten, it's very low, like ten percent, and each year, it it creates this great upward trajectory, where as kids are in our schools. Learning, their writing improves by the time they get to the high school, um so that's, that's kind of consistent. Um one thing I think we need to look into is looking at our interventions, right, cuz it's school. Failure is part of the learning process, but what I wanna make sure we have is that when students are struggling in writing. That there's a clear procedure that we have, where they get put in an intervention class, or their teacher pulls, you know, a small group and does a mini lesson on on what they were struggling with. So that way, that learning process continues. Um and then finally, this is actually tricky, because it's the link, let's try the link real quick, uh cuz I think this is something we really need to focus on.
So Joel, I'd be curious while you're looking that up, to see the middle school broken out six, seventh and eight, cuz it's hard to believe if we're at. This percentage in writing that are freshmen.
Yeah.
Cuz these are, obviously, this is nine through twelve at ninety-one percent, but I would be curious to see.
Yeah.
What those jumps are.
We'll see if Eric can pull some magic. Think our internet's back. You know. Okay. You have broken down, uh sixth grade was at sixty-three percent, uh seventh grade was at fifty-two percent, and eighth grade was at fifty-nine percent.
So you're almost trending backwards at the middle school level.
Yeah. And and granted, uh sixth grade, sixty-three, seventh grade, fifty-two, and eighth grade, fifty-nine. So the students actually take three work samples um over the course of the year, so we'll see and we'll be able to report back. Fall, winter, spring. But I think it comes back again to that, talking about what what are the interventions, so for example, if we're talking about our sixth graders and sixty-three percent pass. What are we doing for the other thirty-seven percent that didn't pass, um i- is the real question. Um so that's something where I think we can maybe kinda shore up our systems on, to make sure those interventions are in place.
Yeah, and I think you'd have to look at those three as well, you know, the fall to the winter to the spring, because if they're. If they're gaining, that shows your interventions are working, and if they're not, it shows our interventions are wrong. But I think the other part is, what are we using, what is the proficiency you're using, is it just the letter grade?
Like we said, writing samples, um those are actually scored with, uh I believe, the Oregon State Rubric, so the ODE puts out, here's the official writing rubric. Uh that's used, so there's usually four categories, like ideas and content, sentence fluency.
And that's used at the middle school and the high school, so we're using the same grading rubric.
Uh I believe they both use the Oregon Department of Ed, um I I know, for example, with our English curriculum at the elementary school, it has a separate rubric. So we use that, but I my understanding and all, I can double check that for you, is that they both use the Oregon Department of Ed rubric, which is what they'll see on the state assessment. Um OSAS.
Okay, so maybe, what did you use a C or better on?
I see you better as the um, English Language Arts, Math, Science and Social Studies.
Oh, the top.
Yeah, so it's the ones that are in blue, just the writing.
Okay, sorry, okay, were you able to break them that night through twelve?
Yeah, those are broken down as well, yeah. I can pull that.
The other category could just be.
What I can do is I can email that and break it out by the grade levels, that's why I don't wanna spend too much time just kinda digging around if that works.
Yeah, and that's great, thank you. But then you don't have much on K through five.
Um those are all linked, if I can access those, what I'll do is um. Potentially, cuz we're having techno- technology issues, maybe we could pause and come back to it after another agenda, cuz it's, I I think that's the meat of our work, and I wanna. Discuss that tonight, in particular on our elementary reading, um that's one thing where I think we really need to 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 put a lot of focus and energy in right now. Cuz I think it all, we are not getting our kids on grade level by third grade, it it impacts their science, their social studies, everything. So I think that's one thing that in in working with Dr. Skinner going into the next year, that that we put a lot of our money in our investment in that early literacy. K one, K three, three reading, um with this volunteer initiative, with our high schoolers coming down, um. Cuz if we can't, if if we can't get them by third grade, they're playing catch up the rest of their academic career, so um if we're good with that, I'll finish this off. And then um get the computer technology stuff figured out, and maybe come back uh. After Anna and Leland's capacity projections, just cuz I want us looking at that data, does that make sense?
Are you um?
Oh, yes, after the, we'll do it after the superintendent uh introduction.
You're just gonna come back to one point one, basically?
Yeah, if that were.
Do you, do you wanna cover these other ones?
Yeah, let's cover the other ones real quick.
Do you wanna wait for all of it?
Let's cover these, and then we can just come back for uh. The academic piece. Um so let's just go one point two, complete the successful uh math, science and ELL curriculum adoption, uh the board just appointed. Uh the the committee members, so uh it's still yellow, we'll hopefully be able to mark that green at our next update, uh and then.
And sorry, Joel, on your next update, can you kind of give us the layout, cuz I'm a little reading the policy and how it works. It almost seems like maybe we're doing it backwards, or creating more work for our teachers, I would think you'd wanna utilize. The committee that's appointed to do the legwork, to bring the curriculums to the teachers, and it seems like we're having the teachers. Pilot multiple things to bring back to a committee, and I think if we tried to flip flop that. It would allow the community members to more or less do the legwork with Carrie, who then Carrie could bring. A selected amount coming to the teachers to pilot, as opposed to the teachers piloting numerous things.
Yeah.
I don't know, I I just.
If you want to explore, and one of the things, it's it's actually coincidence, you mentioned that uh. Carrie and I were talking, I wanna say last week, that that policy, I I A R, our curriculum adoption policy. I don't know the last time we've looked at it, but we we thought maybe like over the summer, let's, let's look at that policy and these procedures to see uh if it fits with. What's best for our our district, um and maybe propose some revisions to that, so um that could be one of those things.
I think it'd be helpful too, cuz that in turn might help kind of catch up when you have multiple deep people help. Helping with deep diving or whatever it may look like, so we can get on track, like I told Carrie, it's like, I don't know how. How she does it with with multiple, I mean, they're not small adoptions, you know, so it'd be nice to have one focus each year that they're due, but. Seems like we just kind of snowballed and we're just compiling.
Yeah, and I wanna say the ODE gives us, Carrie, currently, it's like thirteen, a list of about ten to thirteen, right, to begin with?
Um yeah, I mean, sometimes it's five, and sometimes it's twenty-two ODE approved curriculum, so they go through a process with publishers that. Um submit their curriculum for an initial review, yeah.
Yeah, so I I think that's maybe one of those policies that we look at over the summer, just to say, how can we make this better and this process better the, for our community, for our teachers and staff? And ultimately for our students.
Hey, Joel.
Shift.
Joel.
Yeah, but.
If we're gonna do, if we're gonna change the process, I just wanna make sure that we get on the table, that we really need to make sure we involve the teachers in that decision, and we don't just make a decision for them. Teachers are very, very sensitive to curriculum, they're the ones who have to use it in the end, they kinda like sometimes testing it out before they have to start driving it. So so I would just ask that they be included in the conversation about any remake of the way we have been doing things.
For sure, and and I think, you know, I'm looking at Mr. and Mrs. Bates back there, yeah. The people that are with the students all day generally know what works for students and and what doesn't, so yeah, I think teacher voice is a huge. Huge uh stakeholder in this, so thanks for highlighting that. Um let's jump one point five, uh enhance the performing arts program and increase student participation, um you'll see in your packet, you've got. Uh the the numbers from trimester two of the number of students that were in our performing arts classes at the middle school and high school. I saw, I wanna say, a number of our board members at uh Steen's pillar did the Little Mermaid. Uh drama performance, we had some awesome brother students um showing us their performing arts skills tonight, and then the high school also did. Um a Midsummer Nights Dream performance, um I wasn't able to go to that one, but I heard amazing reviews, so. Um we are reassembling our performing arts improvement team, um our first meeting is April eighteenth with uh Mr. Dunaway. Mr. Schuler and Ms. Mienta, um our choir teacher, um so. Uh that team is going, and we'll set like a one and three year plan for improving our performing arts program. Um let's look here, the last uh yellow here is ensure uh horizontal and vertical alignment. Through consistent levels of support, services and quality curriculum. Uh we've checked with our math consultant, Shannon McCaw, that our math curriculum that we're adopting is vertically aligned, so that students, that the elementary curriculum. Um or the middle school curriculum builds off the elementary and high school builds off the middle school, to work on our vertical alignment. Um that link, that horizontal staffing alignment is uh will take you to a chart. Uh that has our elementary schools and how many um, how many aides are at each, how many general education teachers, how many secretaries? So that helps us um to see where where we're we're spot on, and maybe where we're. So that helps us, um, to see where, where we're, we're spot on and maybe where we're off on our proportions of staffing. So that's something that Jay and I will work on between now and, uh, the next report in July. I've talked for maybe thirty minutes straight.
Great.
Any questions or anything? We'll come back to one point one, we'll get this computer figured out and, um, bring that up after, uh, Dr. Spinner's introduction later in the meeting.
Joel, I, I wanted to mention about the vertical alignment, that that also includes a component of allowing discrete sets of staff to meet with one another across the buildings, so that we have high school social studies staff meeting with middle school social studies staff, meeting with elementary school staff to find out what's working, what isn't working, and share information back and forth to improve the system vertically.
Mr. Cooper, you're always looking out for me. When I look at my next steps, it says August and September, we'll do a ver- uh, vertical alignment P D, uh, and we'll put that in our professional development calendar, so that way the high school staff, social studies department is meeting with the middle school. So, yeah, we'll, we'll get that covered.
Thank you.
With that, I think we needed, uh, let's see your slide, we needed an action on, uh, to make sure that we can go speak with our community groups, um, recruiting volunteers. Um, I'm not sure what kind of motion we'd look for in that. Uh.
I think, again, would more or less need to be specific to where and who's going there.
Yes.
What the representation would be, or what, you know, like the volunteers, but I think it would have to be pretty specific.
Yeah. So what if this, what if, um, we worked behind the scenes and came up with a plan and then brought a motion to the board in May? And we can start May, June, July recruiting volunteers for, uh, starting in the fall? Would that work?
Yeah.
Awesome, we'll, uh, bring that to you in May.
Okay, so we'll come back to finish up the strategic plan report, but we'll move on to Leland and Anna for our modular follow-up report.
Leland's up here, um, we're going to present both agenda topics, three point three and three point four together, because it's kind of a combined conversation, and so we've got all into my presentation. Showing up on Zoom?
There it is.
And it's the right view?
Yeah, showing the full slide.
Um, okay, so. I think I'm not sitting this hard for us. Um, in the March board meeting, we asked the board to approve the purchase of modular buildings for an expenditure up to one million dollars. And, um, we did approve that, so then we did the best we need to get going. And we also asked that we provide some deeper detail on the, um, modular buildings. And then there was question about Steen's Pillar and some other questions that come up. So we tried to put all that information together into this, uh, presentation. So to start, I just want to, um, show. Um, the way that our three in-town elementary schools work, Barnesview and Crooked River, um, they have a zone map. So all students in our, just in our, that go to school in Frandell, not Brothers or Colina, but the, the Frandell students, will either fall into the Barnesview zone or the Crooked River zone. Um, Barnesview and Crooked River have to serve all students that are in those zones, no matter how big the population gets, and how much we grow. Um, Steen's Pillar was open so that we could reduce the class sizes as we are experiencing load. And originally, we were, when we closed down that school, um, that is now Steen's Pillar, we were thinking it would never be a school again. It was just going to be, we didn't know what, sell it or turn it into a district office or something. And then, once we started growing, um, at Barnesview and Crooked River, we decided to open Steen's Pillar. We did a remodel there, and it really reduced the class sizes at Barnesview and Crooked River to, um, the levels that we find more appropriate. Um, at Steen's Pillar, there's a, we call it a cap on enrollment. It's not, you know, a, a legal cap or a policy cap or anything. It's just kind of a target cap that we have. Um, and they also don't have sped programs. They do have students who have special needs who are on an I T. So we have a special ed teacher there and special ed, um, instructional assistant. Um, but they don't have the same high needs, the, what they call the I L C, Intensive Learning Center, and S L C, which is structured learning center. Those are the more high needs, um, programs. We don't, we just don't have that at Steen's Pillar. And Steen's Pillar already has four modular buildings and have been there for a while.
And who's occupying the four modular buildings at Steen's?
I think Grizzly Alp has one, and then Steen's Pillar has three. Um, but they did a move, so I could be backwards on that, but.
And at the time, because school was not open, we remodeled what used to be the library and turned it into the technology department. So right now, the technology department is in Steen's Pillar, as well as print shop, which is in one of the classrooms. Um, there's also a nutrition services office there, a psychiatrist evaluation office, and the maintenance building is on that site. In previous bond discussions, we did an analysis and determined that we do have a need for a central services building, and we had actually planned to figure out a way to build a central services building, take technology out of Steen's Pillar and put it into central services, move the print shop into central services, and have maintenance facilities there and the nutrition services office there as well. Um, but that would require a bond. If we were able to do that, that would be a much better solution for Steen's Pillar than adding modulars at Steen's Pillar, because then they'd have actual building space. So I just want to point out that modular buildings are not ideal. They're, now, keep in mind, thi- this is just a Google search of, of, um, buildings. These aren't the ones we're gonna buy. They look a little bit better than this, but they still are just modular buildings. They don't have the same siding as the regular school. They don't work bricks or whatever it is. They don't have the same roof line, they don't have the same colors, all that. And so they definitely look like an add-on. Um, a better solution, really, would be if you're growing enough, you would build a brand-new school, or you would remodel your addition, uh, your existing schools by adding additions that look like they were there to begin with. You know, they've got the same grip work or whatever it is, that it would look, and if you were to add on to Barnesview or add on to Crooked River, um, or Steen's Pillar, to make them look like, so that the students don't really know that they're going somewhere different than the building that everybody else is in. Um, but if you don't have a big bond anywhere in sight, um, and you're running out of space, a modular is a good feasible option financially, just because of, you can come up with, well, we're lucky, it just don't happen. We're able to come up with the money to do this, but we couldn't come up with the money to do major remodels. A remodel addition is just, that's many, many millions of dollars. So that's just not within our grasp. So that's why, um, when we started looking at this, that's where we landed on the modular buildings. Um, all right, so the next thing I wanted to talk about is, you asked for capacity information. Um, right now, I have, the total enrollment at each school is that first gray line there. I have a target capacity there. These are not the capacity that the architects would tell you when they're building the building, because they would assume you got thirty-five kids per classroom, and every single classroom is full of kids. And, you know, they go off and building codes and things like that. Um, what I looked at is, okay, if you didn't really want more than a certain number of kindergarteners, first graders, second graders, et cetera, and you had to reserve some rooms that would not have the same number of students in them, because they're special education, the intensive learning and structured learning centers would not have the same number of students. They have a lot lower. So I, those are the target capacity numbers I put in there. Two eighty-four is the number that is the target cap for, um, Steen's Pillar. I just got a update, Steen's Pillar is in three of the four mods. Thanks, Eric. So I took the total enrollment here and, yeah, took this total enrollment, and then I said, well, what would happen if we did, if we had a two percent increase next year? It would be this number, and then if the following year, we had another two percent increase just across the board, we're not really reaching what that target capacity is. Capacity really isn't the issue that we're trying to solve. If you, if you look at just the individual class sizes, so like, just take kindergarten, for example, um, Barnesview has twenty-three, twenty-two, nineteen, and twenty-one, Crooked River has twenty-two, nineteen, nineteen, twenty-one, et cetera. And then you look at first grade, and you see Barnesview has seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, and sixteen in first grade. That's where your capacity is, but all the new students coming in aren't going to be in first grade. Some will, but it's not like Barnesview is all going to just fill up with first graders perfectly into those slots. Um, so really what the, I'm sorry, what the issue is, is that the ratio of students coming in who have special needs or who are highly impacted is much higher than it used to be, and it continues to be every year surprising to us, because we always expect it. We work closely with the E S D, and we know who the incoming, that the incoming kindergarteners are gonna come in with, you know, we have a certain number of highly impacted, a certain number of high needs, et cetera. And then more people come in from out of state or out of, just out of the area, and we just have more of those students than what we expected or what we had to fill. So a classroom that may hold twenty-eight third graders just perfectly fine, that same space, if you put six or eight highly impacted kids in there, it's unmanageable. So that's the issue that we're facing, and that's this year in the fall, what made us really start to look at these modulars.
And how many of those are at each school?
So right now, Barnesview is the only of the three elementary schools that have an intensive learning center. It was a decision that was made a few years ago to, to try to, um, take the, a specialized program, and so no matter which zone a student lives in, if they're in the I L C, they go to Barnesview. And that's grown so much. And what was your question? How many are there? I don't actually know, I don't really know how many are there.
From students or is she asking about moms?
From the students are in the.
Nine or ten currently, but that number's projected to double next year.
Just at Barnesview?
So, so we're adding that program to Crooked River, because we want to be able to provide the same level of service at Crooked River that we are at Barnesview. And Barnesview doesn't have the capacity to double, they're over. I mean, that, that program realistically needs to be about six or eight, we're nine or ten now. And so with the increase of incoming kinders, um, again, you know, the separate, between the two schools, it's just a lot more, you know, high intensive needs are coming our direction from the kindergarten level.
So, Anna, can you, there was, uh, some questions and social media buzz about, um, saying that, um, the modulars were going to be just for the highly impacted students, if they were, they were being brought on just for them to go in there. And then there are some, uh, concern, you know, some of them are dry, they don't have bathrooms, and however, then you're going to be separating the highly impacted students out there, and, um, so can you clarify? There was a lot of confusion around that, and I went back and watched the board meeting, and I was confused again as well. Um, so can you clarify, like, or do you know exactly if what the modulars are going to be used for? Is it going to be used for the highly impacted students? Are other students going to go out there and then they're going to be brought to the, to the main building?
Your timing's perfect, because that's our next slide.
Great.
So, so what you see is Crooked River is modded there, so that's going to be two classrooms of upgrade.
With no restroom.
With no restroom in there. So, so what'll? So that, if you look, if you look at the bottom drawing, where you see the big blue X, that's approximately where that building is going to sit. So the building will have, um, it will have a ramp on, on the building side, and it's going to have another set of stairs on the other side. Uh, on the building side, they will have access to the building, they'll put door access on there, and then they will go right up to the hallway and use those restrooms where that red, that, that orange dot is right there. Um, then what they're, what they're going to do over there, I, I think, is they're going to, they're going to get another intensive learning, uh, center over there. So there are some rooms where we're going to have to actually add a door between a couple of rooms and expand all the, all the special needs programs that are over there at Crooked River.
We don't have any at Crooked River right now.
Right, well, we don't have.
We don't have I L C.
I L C, we do have sped. What else do you have over there? There's life, we have life skills, but we just don't have that I L C classroom, which will be inside the building, not a module. Yeah.
I'm just going to say that again louder through the owl.
Yeah.
The I L C will be in the building with a modular, with a bathroom, sorry. Can we rewind? The I L C to be in the building itself with a bathroom, not in a modular. We're going to move fifth, two fifth grade classrooms to the modulars. And then there's several shuffling things that they're working out, that in the end, the I L C will be in the building. That's Crooked River.
And you're projecting how many kids at Crooked River next year?
For that I L C classroom, right around nine.
And then what are you projecting at Barnesview?
Nine also.
And so is a classroom that we have at these buildings adequate for those students?
Um, I mean, it depends on each individual kid's needs. And so, you know, our team looks at the different needs and the staffing concerns. And so I've been meeting with, um, Joel and, and Anna and our various staff members to see how, how that's going to look. Granted, kindergarten registration is coming up, and so we have our projections, and we're, you know, obviously going to make sure that those projections are correct, and then staff accordingly.
Well, what about, I mean, what are you doing building-wise?
We pretty much do just about anything we have to do to support that. So we do have one room where we're going to try to chop a wall up and put a door in there so they can actually access between one room to the next room. Um, and that's going to be kind of down on that far south end. I don't know if you can actually see it on. Yeah, it'd be right about where your mouth, that right in the general area, I mean.
And so is that funding coming out of this million dollars, or where's the funding to do this?
I, I was planning to probably do that and some other support stuff for them, that'll come out of maintenance reserve.
And then what are we doing at Barnesview? They already have the I L C, so they don't need upgrades or improvements for that, or?
Right, so the Barnesview mod, we'll have restaurants in it, we'll have two restaurants in it, two classrooms, two restaurants. They want to put their student success center out there. So right now, it's actually been, uh, they've been using the, one of the kindergarten units at home. And those students are, they can be, um, they're not sped students, but they can become dysregulated at times, so putting them out there makes actually really good sense. Um, that building is going to actually set out where that, where the Blue Cross is up there, which is on the far north side of the, of the gym. And then, since it has, uh, restaurants in it, we really don't need to worry about where, which restaurants are going to use inside the building. It has all the infrastructure that we actually need, uh, to support that program in there. And then she, uh, her, I can't remember where they were going to, uh, they're messing around with, with movement of some of the sped stuff and the title rooms over there. Um, so I know that, uh, where the title room currently is, that's moving out of there. I think it's going to actually move into where the student success center is now, and then they're going to use that other room for another special ed classroom. All right?
But right now, the title room is in the same pod where students are having outbursts and I don't know what the right terminology is, but it's very difficult.
Breaks, break room? Yeah, dysregulated.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, loud noises and things like that. And so they're in the title room to run out of read and concentrate. So moving that to a different location will be very helpful. So moving that to a different location will be very helpful.
On this one, is it fenced in? Is it completely fenced in?
They're all completely fenced in. They're in the back where all the fences, there's a six foot fence around, around both.
That's a great question. And I'm, I'm going to safely assume that on this particular one, there will be some sort of radios. Something that where they can get a hold of a.
We're planning to tie it into the, the public address system. If they want radios, they can supply radios at their T B public address systems a lot more uh they'll say than it was.
Pacing the distance.
Okay, so the cost of the buildings. So Barnesview, that building is a wet building. And the total cost is right there, two hundred fifty-four thousand seven sixty-five. And then the dry building that's going in at Crooked River is two hundred thirty-seven, four hundred ninety. So that's, when you look at those two, that's really close to half a million. So that's half a million. The other half a million that we're looking at, we'll cover all those things that you see down in the yellow screen. So all the infrastructure, all the A M, all the things that actually have to go into putting those buildings in so that we can use them and make sure we do all the things. Management cost.
Okay, so I just wanted to address uh where the million dollars is coming from. Um so at, in September, we were closing up the books from twenty-two, twenty-three and transferred money into the general fund. Whenever we have general fund savings, which we have, we have uh a lot of savings last year from just unfilled positions and some things that just were unanticipated and we had additional revenue that we weren't anticipating. So at the end of the year, we said, okay, there's, we needed this target, we're going to be doing better than that target. So some of that exit is going to go in to plan for the future. We try to do that every year and um we don't budget to put anything into the maintenance reserve. And so this has been our, our method to make sure that we get money into the maintenance reserve. It's been working really well. So we moved some money into the maintenance reserve. Um we put money in there for just usual facilities, maintenance needs, and we also set aside some money for the C C S modular because that lease is ending. And so we had, we had to figure out what we're going to do with that. Um so there was quite a bit of money that went into the maintenance reserve. Around that same time, the principals at Crooked River and Barnesview were really sounding the alarm as to what was happening in the special education area and looking at the incoming kindergarteners for next year. And so that's when Leland met with Joel and me and um Eric and I don't remember the superintendent, yeah, a bunch of different people from Steen's Pillar, Crooked River, Barnesview to try to figure out what do we need to plan for. Uh because we don't want to get into next year and then suddenly just to be in a, a worse panic, right? We'll, we'll start planning for next year now. So um during that time around September, October, we started talking about what do we think we're going to need? And we came up with the idea of let's use some of the maintenance reserve money to purchase modular buildings for them. Um and then also around that same time, we were seeing that our state school fund revenue, our interest revenue, our property tax revenue, all these things are probably going to come in higher than what we're, we're expecting. So let's plan to use the maintenance reserve and then as we continue out through this year, if we are able to at the end of this year, if we're, if we're exceeding our targets in the general fund, we'll do a transfer out again into the maintenance reserve to cover that. You can see our interest earnings this year alone are almost totally covering above the budget. They're almost seven hundred, they're, they're almost, they're over seven hundred thousand dollars. So we're almost covering the million dollar purchase alone, just out of interest earnings, even with the budget. So um so in November, we went to the board and just said, hey, we're just giving you a heads up. We want to make sure that you know that we're thinking about this modular building because we know the modular buildings are not ideal. And we just wanted to tell you why we were doing it, give you the heads up so that we, you know, you could have time to ask questions and we could gather information, et cetera. And so I just wanted you to know that we weren't, when we came to you in March, it wasn't just a sudden thing at that point. And that we really were not just magically finding million dollars for something we didn't plan for. Um so after that time, then Leland has been working with vendors to get the information, to get everything going. And um we've got, you know, something like that, we have to get bids or work off of a state contract or something like that. So and you have to find a vendor who actually has a modular that they in stock or that they can build and plan.
Yeah, these were, these were already pre-built, so.
So that's where we're headed and we're going to be on track, assuming everything works out.
So does Crooked River have an S T S or S S C?
Does Crooked River hasn't, has it have an S L C?
Yeah, they do.
And how many students are in that one?
Um currently, I, it's projected to be around ten next year. But I think it's roughly around that number right now.
And what's our projection? So is the nine? So what's our projection for Barnesview?
For which one?
For the S L C.
It's around twelve next year.
One thing we could do, um just throwing out bad ideas, is perhaps bring Grant here in May to give a update on sped projections. S L C, I L C, E R C, um lots of acronyms. Uh and it's important that we, we all know and, and he does a great job keeping it all straight for us. So maybe we could have Grant give kind of an overview presentation on, on sped and all these different programs because they get, they get jumbled very easily.
Well, just, yeah.
And then uh so what else is in Steen's Pillar? Anna, you said the print shop, Grizzly Mountain Home Link.
Technology.
Nutrition.
Well, the nutrition services central kitchen is in there and that probably won't change. That works really well. Um but the nutrition service office, yeah, the, the staff members would move to a simple.
The windows in there.
Oh, yeah, a side, a side.
And you said the print shop uses one classroom. Grizzly Mountain is only using one modular? Do they use classrooms inside of Steen's Pillar?
They have classrooms inside too. They have everything on their west end. Like the offices from the front door and walking over there on the walk inside is Grizzly Mountain.
From the side off third or the side off first?
Southwest corner, on, on the south building.
So how many buildings, how many?
Fifth grade was in the.
So there's, I want to say there's ten total classrooms in there, so.
So they have all ten?
They're probably use, they're probably using six. No. Because Steen's Pillar does use some of the classrooms uh on the, on the east side of that building.
Why was there a um, a fifth grade Steen's uh pillar classroom that's back out to the mobs? Do you know why that?
I don't know why.
We can find that.
The size of the room, the modular is bigger than the size of the classroom, even though it's a fourth grade, so both fourth grades moved out there.
Is it a split class or just a solid fifth grade?
There's only one of the fifth grade classes got moved out to a modular.
One of the class.
To, to fourth grade? Is that so Grizzly Mountain could have classrooms in the building or why?
They did do a swap with some of the Grizzly Mountain.
We'll get, let's, let us.
Yeah, we can, we can get.
They had reasons, but I couldn't.
And then, I don't know if Grant wants to answer this. What, what do these rooms or areas look like for the I L Cs and S L Cs of these kids progress into like the middle school and the high school?
So like what are the, what are the rooms look like at the middle school and the high school?
I'm just concerned if we have this much growth, as Anna was saying, if you have individuals that move in that aren't the incoming kindergarteners that you know.
Sure.
What are our other, you know, the middle school and high school? Are we going to come fall and need modulars there? Are they at capacity? I mean, it sounds like Barnesview's been over capacity.
Sure.
So.
They were, they were over capacity.
Yeah.
And that, well, they're right, like right, just a little bit over capacity right now, but they would absolutely be if we didn't have split the I L C program for next year.
Okay.
Um for the middle school, I mean, Parkus could probably speak a little bit better about space uh in capacity. Or so the name. With the projections of fifth graders coming into sixth graders, our sped numbers, our sixth grade sped caseload is currently at high twenties for our sixth grade uh E R C. Next year, it's projected to be close to fifty. So we have been working with Anna and Grant on allocation of an additional um halftime staff member. So we are in process with that. Space isn't as big of a, a need at the middle school. Uh with the, the six mods that we do have out back are very important for us to keep. Um not just for um janet classes. We have three of them that are full-time janet classes. And then others are used periodically throughout the day for electives. Um and then possible reading, title, improv stuff going on. So um spacing isn't as big of a deal for, for us with, with that growth.
Okay, so with thirty projected coming in, you have the space you feel like adequately for that at the middle school? And I don't, I don't see anyone from the high school. Do you know anything about the high school thing?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Space wise, I can't speak to that. They've got two pretty size rooms for sure. And then there's a mod out back that we, we emptied out this year, but if we had to, we can, they can use that mod out there, mod two.
What's going on with the space that they were originally going to do the childcare facility? Is that vacant or?
It's almost turned into a childcare facility. It's almost vanished.
So we have another mod empty besides the childcare one for high school?
Yes.
So then what's your projections? We just have the two mods. That's our only projections. We don't have down the road from that. And then can you go back to your target numbers, Anna? I had a question, some questions on that.
As she's pulling that up, uh the fire alarm in Scott's hotel started going off, so we had to evacuate. So he will return.
So when you say our target capacity, that's you saying classrooms with an adequate twenty-eight students? Am I understanding what you're saying? So right now our total enrollment is five eleven, but if you put twenty-eight kids in each room inside of the school, five hundred and eighty would fit.
I assumed twenty at kindergarten, bigger number at first grade, et cetera. So, yeah. And then I assumed that some of the classrooms, the, pretty much the entire sped pod did not have that number of kids.
So your two percent increase you have on there that moves us to five forty-seven, is that your anticipated growth for next year? Or why the two percent?
I am going to propose a budget that's one point nine percent increase. Two percent is what we, I think actually this year, we were two percent over budget. So.
And when was Barnesview built? When was it actually finished?
Two thousand fifteen. Right, Mr. Day?
You're correct.
So I guess my only concern would be Crooked River is still going to come. I mean, at next year, you're you're kind of at capacity, even with, without the modular. I mean, with the modular. For what? The usage, correct? Because we would then remove two class.
Okay, yeah.
And what are we doing in that?
It, yeah, if you had a two percent increase, you're still, you're really close to my target capacity. And again, I think, you know, someone else might come along and say this is too low. And, and they're not going to be all in one grade level.
Right.
So it's, it is possible that you may have a little bit of growth in every classroom and it doesn't have an impact on your space. At some point it will. So I do think we need to be looking long term of what do we want to do with Crooked River with the next bond? If we want to some, or do we want to start looking at another elementary school? I don't think our numbers district wide are big enough quite yet, so I started thinking about that. But someday we'll probably maybe move another elementary school or something, some other way of adding on to the existing school. Once your schools get super big, you can't get them all through the lunchroom in an, in an adequate amount of time. You can't get them all P E and music and all that. But not, it's, today's not the day, but it is probably coming. Which is a good problem. It's a good problem that we're not there. Contracted. Where our places are working, it's not losing students.
Yeah.
I'll just voice that I just, you know, January, the board kind of decided it's not ready to run a large bond. So my concern would be, um we probably need to look at a short-term goal or something for Crooked River if our growth continues at two percent. I don't know if that's steadily, I can't remember what you said, but it's been steadily over the last few years. But um because we wouldn't want to be in a predicament come fall where now you have, you know, you don't have somewhere to put kids.
And hopefully maybe in a year, this board will be ready to start, you know, in January or June twenty-four, this board wasn't ready. Maybe January or maybe December twenty-four or something, you know, soon they'll be ready to start getting that bond committee together and start talking about, okay, what do we want to do next? That would be, you know, and the, once you start, once you decide, you know, the bond committee will take to the board uh recommendation to go out for a bond. Once you do that, it can be three years before you open the doors of a new facility.
Well, that's what I'm saying. So I mean, even if you did a, a quick turnaround to start a large bond, if, if the increase in students continues at two percent, three years, you won't have room at Crooked River. So that's why I would.
You just have, either you would have larger classrooms.
Right.
Or what, when option we do have is if, if we were able to find a spot for Grizzly Mountain that was outside of Steen's Pillar that worked better for them, we could potentially increase to three grades or three classes per grade level at Steen's Pillar, which would again, would leave some of the, the class size.
Yeah, we're probably going to have to maybe put some of those options on, on our list of topics. If we could get some of that stuff together, I think it would help provide for expansion in the next few years. So you can really get a large ticket bond building and, you know, running because I wasn't sure if I was reading your numbers right. So, and I mean Steen's, Steen's pillars on the same boat. It just can't help alleviate anything from the other two schools, like you said, without utilizing more classrooms within that building. So um we'll need to probably have a better short-term idea for you, Anna, and Leland. I don't know going in and out of schools, but.
And it might not sound like it right now, but this is a great problem for us to be troubleshooting, navigating. I'd say ninety percent of Oregon school districts are struggling with enrollment drops. Uh we're really fortunate in Kirk County where uh we are seeing enrollment increases. So although difficult, it, it's a good thing for us to be navigating.
Any other questions for Leland or Anna?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So are you, Joe, or you want me to keep going?
Uh I'm going to go after four point two.
Okay, so we'll move on to the school board update. So we put um this, the bond committee back on um and I'm, I'm going to put it over to Cheyenne. We think we appointed the committee at the beginning of the year, um not really understanding what we were going to be doing this year. And um so I know Cheyenne wanted to speak in regards to the bond committee and um a potential vacant B N R committee, so.
And so I just wanted to, um, I would like to recuse myself from the bond committee, um, after attending the OSBA. Bond conference in February of this year, um, it became evident, evident to me that we have a lot of work to do. Um, the current bond that we have on for May was thrown together very fast with no support or promotion. Um, and while our facilities are in great need of repair, um, to me, it seems like a Band-Aid on a hemorrhage. Um, and I would like to take the time to gather information from constituents, community members, students, staff. Um, as to what needs to be fixed, um, I think if we ask them, I'm more on the, um. I, I like to be on the radar for the big bond, um, this just kind of like came out of nowhere. And when we originally started the bond committee, uh, we were looking at doing a, a big rollout. Like in twenty twenty seven, when Facebook and Apple and the taxes are rolling off, or other bond is expiring. And if we keep on going to the taxpayers and asking them for a little bit of money at a time, it's not really. What like, we, we do, we need new schools, how many times can we repatch the middle school flat roof, and we need to look at like, big options. Um, I also feel like if the taxpayers are footing the bill for this, that we need. To go out to them, to the Democratic Party, to the Republican Party, to the Kiwanis, to different, um, to parents and say, what is it that's important to you? What do you want to see? Um, I know that within this school, you guys have a list of things that are important. But, but the taxpayers are paying for it, and so we need to find out what they want to see long term. Um, for, uh, for what they're paying for, so I would like to remove myself from this. The bond committee at this time, and I believe that we, uh, re-up the bond committees every year, is that correct? Um, so I, I, I don't want to be on this bond for me.
So, I would say when this, when Cheyenne had brought this up. I don't know that we necessarily need a committee for this bond, because it's already, Anna submitted the paperwork, it's going to the ballot. We missed the whole, Anna provided a very detailed, I mean, step by step, it's in four boxes. I mean, she really has us dialed out, and we, we pretty much went from box one to, to the end of four. So I am not, I, I know you two are bond committee people, so I don't know, Jen, if you had any. Plan to do anything extra for this bond, because it came so quickly, or, um. If we need another committee member now, or if we want to wait in a year or two, when we have needs to run it. A committee with a bond, so right now, if Cheyenne accuses herself, it leaves just you.
Yeah.
On the bond, and I don't know if you two had any plans, I mean, the, the measure comes up next month.
Yes, it does.
I'm not sure that there's any work that can be done in the short week we have. And that, it sounds like was Cheyenne's concern, so.
I think, Jen, I think both of us were really impressed with the Crestwell, um, you know, the presentations at the bond committee, and when I was. Uh, appointed to the bond committee, my thought was, we need to do something big. Like this, and if we go to the taxpayers for, for several different bonds. We're not gonna, you know, they, the way that the OSBA training, um, explain things that, you know, they, they failed and they pass and they fail. And so I don't want to run the risk of not, we need a lot of things, not just a few little things for maintenance, and so. Um, I feel like this is a setup for failure, because there has been absolutely no promotion, um, over that all.
So we already have the paperwork done and sent.
Yeah, so it can go on, it can go on it, but we have not, I, I mean, I haven't, I know that staff cannot. Go out and promote it, but they can provide information, and so there's been no information updated. Um, on our Facebook page, there's been no, nothing put out on social media. And so people are gonna go to vote, and they don't even know what it is, you know, what, what our needs are. And so that, that bothers me that it hasn't been promoted, and I just don't want the need on it.
So I'm alone, well, standing on this bond committee, which is fine. Um, you know, me being brand new to this as well, went to the bond conference in February, learned a ton. And at that point in time, our bond was ready to go, I mean, it's going on the May ballot, and I agree, I have not seen anything on social media. I was waiting for somebody to say, okay, this, this is our next step, this is what we're gonna do, this is what we need to do, you know, and all these steps. But I don't feel like jumping ship is the correct term for me, so here I am, representing the bond committee. And I'll keep doing that, whatever that looks like, um. I thought we were gonna put a video out about the problems that we were having at CCMS. Um, you know, to kind of show people, hey, this is what's happening, this is why we're asking for a bond. And I haven't seen that, so I'm not sure where that fell through the cracks, um. But it sounds like we're still doing a bond, so thank you, and I guess, so the, we're gonna go from there.
Do we have to be you going to Leland, Leland can't promote it, so you'd have to go to Leland, get the video, and you would do that.
Or unless.
Or the committee would.
If I recuse myself, it's Steve or Scott, someone else wants to be on the bond committee with Jen. Uh, so you don't have to be on, or if we don't need a bond committee, because the bond's already going.
Um, I'm looking to somebody who's went through this before to help guide this, because I'm, apparently. You know, I, here I am, help me, help me, Anna. So the bond committee, um, also known as Long Range Facilities Planning Committee, works long in advance of. Taking a recommendation to the board to put a measure on about. So what we did this time is just, we, we knew the board, appointed, we had a list of committees, and that was one of the committees. Um, and the name was changed to bond committee, it used to be called Long Range Facilities Planning Committee, but it was changed to bond committee. Just because it made more sense to, um, to all, which is great, um, because of maybe this is more. And then, as the year progressed, it became apparent that we really weren't ready to start getting that long range facilities committee together. That's a big committee of lots of community members, lots of stakeholders, um. And pulling them all together to talk about what do you, what do you want to do if we do the big bond, you know? And then you kind of go through the process of deciding what's actually gonna be on the ballot, and you take that to the board and say. Board, we're recommending that you go out for a bond measure for these things. After that, the, the board of individuals can advocate for the bond or advocate against the bond. Your, your choice, um. Then what would happen is theoretically, there would be people who were in support by passing the bond. And they would form a political action committee or a PAC, that can be made up of board members or not. A lot of times, um, board members are the drivers of the political action committee, but that's completely separate from the district. The district employees, um, can provide information, and often the PAC will ask the district for information. But this time, what we did is that, we just said, you know, this bond makes so much sense to at least us as staff. We think it will speak for itself, we know you're not ready for a full, big seventy seven million or whatever bond. But we've got water coming down the walls in the middle school and places where we need boost. If we, if you approve us going out for this bond, we're not gonna ask you to do anything, any kind of advocacy or anything, because. We just think that six million dollars of state money matching just speaks for itself. And people can vote for the bond or against the bond, obviously, but at least we asked. So that if someone says, why do you still have water coming down, the middle school with Jim, walls, we can say, well. That's not something we can pay for out of operations, you know, no, no business goes out and does capital improvements. Out of regular operations, they go get a, a loan of some kind, and that's basically what a bond is, it's just a loan. It's a big enough dollar amount that we just need to get, we just need to go into debt to do it, and the way that. We can do that, the cheapest way this school districts can do that in, in Oregon and probably most states, is to do tax exempt bonds. Because we can get interest rates that are three to five percentage points lower than what you would do if you just went to a bank and got, and got a loaning. So that's why that mechanism is in place in Oregon for the property tax outside of measure five and measure fifty. For the school bonds, is so that schools can do these major capital improvements for things that operations won't cover.
Were the S R funds allowed to be used for major capital improvements?
Yes.
And who decided, like, if you had water pouring down the middle school walls. And there was no specifications on where you use the S R funds, who prioritized what that then? I think, and that is my issue, is that if you have massive issues like water pouring in, which we saw. And you went over and did something maybe that wasn't as mandatory as, you know, the water pouring in. That's my concern, is that I'm, I'm elected by the taxpayers, my job is to my constituents, and I work for the public. And so when they, you know, when you, when you have money that's given to you, or you're asking them for money. It's important that, that they're able to be involved in the process of what that money is being used for. Because it doesn't seem like to me it was a good, so, you know, good use of resources to get ten million dollars in S R funds, and if you have water pouring down. You know, there's a major area here, but you use the money for something else, and then, you know, it, it's, it just seemed to me like it was a sink or swim, like. We, you know, maybe we mismanaged a little bit of money in the past, and like, we need to do this now, 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 and there, and then there was no follow through. Like, there's absolutely been no promotion.
So I completely support your decision to be off the committee, I think, you know, if you're uncomfortable. I think you need to do what's right for you, and so if the, but I think what I'm trying to help with is if the committee doesn't know. Or the board doesn't know, what does the committee need to do without you being on there, can they still function? The answer is yes, you can still function, because you really have the duties. Until we start talking about what we want to do next.
Three, three people went here, but I've been in Scott being through that before, I would say, I'm a potential Scott. I haven't been through it before, so I can't. We're all help.
Yeah, Anna does have a check, I don't know what you call that, but it's got boxes and it says the process. But we totally missed the whole process for this one, um, but Anna does have like a, a, like a process laid out. Step by, I don't know what you want to call that.
And yes, we did do this fast, this is something that. We had, we didn't have water pouring down the gym before, we've had leaks that we've been able to manage throughout the middle school, but.
Little smash.
When this happened, that's when we said, we have to do something, what can we do? And oh, at the same time, we have a six million dollar grant that we applied for and been awarded, and so that's why we did this fast. So I'm sorry that it went really, really fast, and, you know, it's, it's one of those things, if it doesn't pass, because it went too fast, then. Okay, but at least, like I said, at least we asked, or at least we tried.
Pretty darn best to leave six million dollars sitting on the table.
Okay.
How, how long have we known about the six million dollar match? Did we know before February?
We knew it.
When did we apply?
In the summer.
I think December fifteenth.
December fifteenth was when that one was submitted.
When we applied.
Like in a couple of weeks after, after the submission.
So it was January second.
Of being through bonds before, if you run a small bond, and then turn around another year and a half and try and run a big bond. From what I understand from the OSBA training, said, you're not gonna probably get both of those bonds. Because the people are gonna say, well, you just asked us for a bunch of money last year, a lot of times they don't understand. You know, with, with the matching, and even if we have the matching six million, it doesn't, it's, it's pennies in the bucket for what we need to do. For our schools, so I, I would rather take the chance and pour in all of our effort into that huge bond. Where we can actually improve, and, and, you know, taxpayers, they don't, they're not gonna see the. You know, flat roof at the middle school being patched for the thousandth time, they want to see new facilities and. You know, um, turf fields and new buildings and new elementary schools, and things that they can say, well, that's where our money went, you know? So that, that's my reason, I don't know if we need to do an action to remove it, or if I can just remove myself.
There's policy on the procedure around that, I believe, uh, I believe we did a motion back in August to appoint. Um, maybe we can just leave it as a vacancy for now, and come back in May, if we have to do a motion or anything to appoint someone new.
Yeah, I don't think we have to do a motion to, for her to accuse herself, I think, as we said, we need the action to appoint someone. But Leland, where are we at on the long range facility committee for you?
Well, because we're doing this bond like we are now, we aren't doing anything with long range facilities committee. Because that long range facilities committee, I, I mean, if we don't pass this time, we've got one more shot to pass it. And, and if we can put a long range facilities committee, get them back together for a November election if we wanted to. Um, to try and get them to do some of that work.
So do we, do you, where are you at on the actual forming of the committee, do we?
We, we stopped what we were doing when we put, when we went out for this bond. So that, so like, when you guys and the board decided that we were gonna go out for this bond. I did not pursue the long range facilities committee, because there was no work for them to really do at that point.
It was really when the board said in January that they weren't ready for a big bond, when we said, we don't need to do anything with long range. So I say, with all the gusto, what's already in motion, let's get this thing passed, right? What do I need to do to work with you, Leland, to get from something from Jason and Eric's help, getting a video out, showing people what has been transpiring? And then we are getting, you know, a matching kind of six million dollars that's free, and this is how this can help, I mean, we're already in motion.
They started working on some stuff last week, broke a motion.
Perfect. We have a website, it's, I, I'm not sure if it's live at this moment, it's very close. Okay, so let me know what you need from me, let's work together, let's get, I mean, we're in motion, let's hammer this out.
So wait, does school, they can do stuff, or they can't?
This information, we can provide information about what the bond will be used for.
You've created a website.
Yes.
The added web, the added webpage, which links to the press release, has a link to the press release. A link to three local articles about the bond, and then, as Anna said, shares the information around what. What things, if the measure passes, it would go to replace, replace roofs, you know, like the specific things. It doesn't advocate, and that's where the line is, it doesn't advocate passage of it, or just speaks about the board. Um, voted to go out to this, for this bond measure, and shares some information around that.
And it breaks it down, I'm assuming, like, this is where, this is how much is going to this, does so much work this?
Because when, what we voted on was just lump sums, Leland didn't have the breakdowns.
It's the same, the information, I think, is the same as what we gave the board in January.
And what I think we put in, what would be on the ballot, right?
The one we voted on was generic, because you said it would be roughly, I didn't have the exact quotes, it'd be roughly this, roughly, so you're using those numbers?
Yeah, it'll always be a proxy until I can actually go out to our P's for the contractors and all that.
And is there a reason that we waited this long to put any promotion out? I mean, we are, or information out, because it's now less, you know, less than a month before they go to vote on it. So that seems.
Yes, I don't know if that's normal.
I think it was just the unders, there was an understanding that it sounds like the district just needed us to approve it. Nothing was gonna be done with it.
Right, and then there were some additional conversations that happened, and, um.
Do you expect it to pass with no information out? I mean, I, I, I haven't really.
The last bond measure we did was sixty six million dollars, it would have cost taxpayers an additional ten cents. We hired a promotional company, we had videos, we had mail, if the PAC sent out mailers, um, we had. You know, all kinds of stakeholder input and it passed, so I can't predict, we actually had polling company tell us they've never seen such support. For a school bond, and there was just absolutely nobody thought it was gonna pass, that, that it was gonna fail, and it fails, so. I can't predict, I don't know what'll happen.
I guess maybe there's not as much to do when you're on the list.
I say, use me with whatever you need, let's, let's do this, right, let's get this information out, um, and. We'll just do what we can from here, communications, social media, all the things that we can do in the next month. And word of mouth, obviously, okay, call it me, let's do whatever I can do to help.
Okay, we will move on to four two, uh, Dr. Skinner is now here, um. So Dr. Skinner is coming from. She is currently in Midland, Texas, um, where she works right now. We are thrilled to. Be adding her as an addition to our district. Um, so we thought we would give her the ability to. Kind of introduce herself and just so, um, people could put a face for the name that didn't necessarily get to community nights or. When she was in town last, um, running as a candidate.
Okay. Well, thank you so much. I am so excited about being here along with my husband, Michael. So I am just honored to accept the superintendent position, uh, with the Kirk County School District. So first off, I want to thank the school board for number one, believing in me and giving me this opportunity to be able to serve. You know, the students, the staff, parents, the families, the community. It's just such an honor. I also wanted to thank the administrators and the scholars. And the community members for hosting me during the full day of the interview process. So it was very nice to really get some important insight into what you value. What you find important and what the needs are of the districts. It was very important for me to hear that. Um, so I just really want to thank everyone. It's just a great honor to be here. Uh, really the cornerstone, I would say of my first one hundred days is to listen, to learn about the streets. The needed improvements, the opportunities. Um, I really wanted to build a collective plan with. Everyone, various perspectives so that we can build that plan to work together to benefit the scholars of our district. So just a few goals, I would say for the first one hundred days is to build relationships. I want to build open and honest communication transparency. So then we can really begin to work together and to bridge. Any gaps so that we can just all work collaboratively. Um, and then really next is increase effectiveness and efficiency so that we can provide excellent support to our schools. To our campuses, to the scholars, to the families. Um, I want to be visible on all the campuses and just provide that support. And then of course, what we're all here for, uh, the, you know, success of our students. We want to have increased student outcomes. We want to really close achievement gaps for our students. And I love what Joel was saying about early literacy. That's my love and passion area. Um, I was a first grade teacher for many years, so it's just very important for me to see readers, uh, in our schools. Um, I think until that happens, you do put Band-Aids on things for a very long time. So I'm super excited to jump in and join. Any reading initiatives that I can support. I think it's very important to the success of our school district. So. Again, just thank you so much for having me. I'm honored to accept this position. And I think together we are absolutely going to succeed. And just think again, it's a collaborative effort and I'm just so happy. To join the team. So thank you again.
So are you ready?
Yeah, let's jump back. And a shout out to our, uh. Tech department, Eric Ryan for troubleshooting on the fly. Um, so just jumping back to goal one point one. Uh, the board asked in, uh, January to explore proficiency in both social studies and science, which is something. Um, that's been embedded in our elementary, uh, curriculum. Like. I, when you think of high school and you, you take U S history class, so you have a final, whereas elementary, it's usually embedded in the English language arts curriculum. So what I did, uh, for social studies, um, was I polled, uh, at each trimester. Uh, elementary teachers do give, uh, a grade for social, uh, social studies and science. So this is the distribution, um, of, uh, social studies grades for our elementary students. So it looks like, um, the vast majority, uh, and this is all our elementary students are, uh, meets the grade level standards. And this would be based off, um, the teacher's, uh, assessment of students' abilities on a science, social studies assignments. Uh, maybe there's a quiz or two, um, those sort of things. So we have. Uh, a proportion with the meets plus and then a portion on both sides of progressing and then view, uh, progressing minus. So that's this, uh, social science distribution. Um, looking at our science, uh, kind of similar, uh, bell curve there of you got, um. Uh, about, I'd say, I don't know, quarter, uh, in meets plus, uh, the majority in meets and then some in progressing. So that's the distribution of, uh, winter grades of our elementary students. On the second one, what I really, uh, what it really is. I think we have to invest our time, energy and money into getting, um, our elementary students reading. So, uh, this is dibbles. So, uh, they take a fall and winter dibbles. They'll also take a spring. And this shows, uh, the distribution of those scores over four categories, uh, you know, red, which would be below, yellow, which would be nearly meaning. Green, which would be proficient and blue, which would be exceeding. Um, you can see, uh, when you look at this, uh, kindergarten. So in the fall, they assess kindergartens, you know, I think within the first couple of weeks. So you would expect that. The first week in kindergarten, you don't know all of your letters and the letter sounds. So what's awesome to see here is we still see some red and yellow. And, and that's something as we go into the spring test, we really needed getting those kids into intervention. But you can see we've had a tremendous amount of growth from fall to winter in our kindergartners. Um, what I think, uh, hearing Dr. Skinner is we have to get our. Observe objectively, look at what interventions we're doing. So when, when a kid scores red. What happens then? What is the tier two intervention? What is the tier three intervention? And making sure those are effective. It's just like if you're sick, uh, and you take medicine and you don't get better. Well, do we need to adjust the dose? Do we need to adjust the frequency? So really looking at our interventions and seeing how we can be more effective there. Um, so you can see, uh, as well, that would be the distribution from, um, for the, those K five levels. So that's something that we'll work with principals to say, what's going on in our tier two? How can we improve to, to increase the effectiveness of those interventions? Cause we know every kid's not going to get it the first time. We, we've all been in school and I remember I still struggled with fractions. So. But what do we do when kids don't, don't learn and what, what are the next steps, uh, to make sure they do catch up? So. Um, those are our dibbles and all come back, uh, in July with the spring data. So they'll take this test. Um, it does get harder because you add more standards as the year goes on. Um, but that, those are the kind of benchmark assessments that we get. Going on back to our, our chart. So this is just talking about some of our next steps in the time being. Um, I have, I regularly or I very seldomly write in all caps, but in all caps, regular attendance. We have to partner with our parents, partner with our community to get kids coming to school. We can have the best tier one instruction, tier two instruction. But if kids aren't showing up, they're not going to be learned. So that's another big area that I don't believe, uh, we've talked much about attendance this year. That has to be a board priority next year and partner with our parents, partnering with families to get kids showing up regularly to school. Um, another thing, we will be starting the, uh, Kirk County High School ASVAB, uh, Mr. Huffman and his team. They, this was a pilot to show, hey, our kids are graduating at a high rate, but how, how are their academics? What are they learning? We've been doing it in ASVAB, uh, this spring, we're piloting to see how students do on that. And then having our guidance counselors follow up with students based on results. Uh, we still do the social studies honor cord. Um, so students that want a red, white and blue honor cord, they take an additional social studies assessment. Um, at the high school and they get a, a special cord. Uh, like I said, we need to develop better intervention programs, make sure that they're being effective. Uh, high school, early literacy collaboration projects, uh, that's, uh, Ms. Kurtz of the high school is looking at taking some of her kids. For high school students and having them, um, serve as literacy specialists down at the elementary schools, which I think is an, an awesome way to just start attacking this. Um, whole force. Uh, the middle school is piloting a new program called I Ready. Uh, that's something we, we haven't really had a good benchmark in place. So they're trying it out this year. Uh, as well as the intervention component of that. Um, like I talked about early with our volunteer, we're going to start a community volunteer literacy partnership program. Um, so we'll kick that off, uh, in, in the fall. And, um, and then finally, uh. We need to look at whether we have a good elementary social studies and science assessment. Right now it's just going off, you know, the teacher's grades, um, what's, what sort of assessments. Uh, but we don't want to just throw assessments onto the system, um, if we're not preparing kids. So we need to explore and work with our principals and teachers of what that really looks like and what would be an effective assessment. To get some good data on how our students are doing with social studies and science.
Is that what I ready is? Social studies and?
Um, no, I ready is, uh, English, language arts and math, and that's just at the middle school right now.
Is that what these numbers are coming from or you want to move to utilizing this system?
Uh, we are piloting this year. I believe a good move would be. We piloted this year, we kind of get a sense of like, what does this data look like? Uh, and then next year say like, hey, this is our eventual, uh, official benchmark test. Fall, winter, spring, just like dibbles is for our elementaries.
And then the math on K through five, Joel, forty-four percent level two or higher?
Really good question. So, uh, math, so we use a, a, a benchmark assessment called, um, Imagine Math. Uh, just like in dibbles, that gives a fall, winter, spring. Uh, Imagine Math was great during COVID. Cause folks could work on it when students were doing distance learning, they could work on it from home. It had an intervention program. Um. We've had a three-year contract with them and not planning to renew that contract. Um, Cherry is looking to explore, I believe, uh, three or four different products. I want to say Renaissance. Uh, learning the program called Freckle. Am I making this up?
The Freckle is under the umbrella of Renaissance. Renaissance is a company. Freckle is their intervention, fluency component.
Yeah. So she's having some teachers and staff member, members look at if that's a good replacement for that benchmark assessment. So.
I didn't look, I looked through the math curriculum, but do the curriculums not come with their own? Like benchmark testing throughout the curriculum? Cause it just seems crazy that you can pull science and social studies off of. E L A for K through five, but then we're, we're at math forty-four percent. I'm assuming it's passing a level two or higher. How many levels are there? And if we're getting rid of this. To pilot something else, is that because it, it goes better with? I just don't understand all of the extra testing. It seems like if we're adopting curriculums. Are, are there not benchmark testing throughout the curriculum to know the kids are learning the curriculums?
So, um, our curriculums are, it's set into modules that teach a set number of standards, like. Or like units, like unit one, then you take, you take an assessment, unit two, um, where it's just covering the unit they just taught. Whereas these benchmarks look at the entirety of the, you know, second grade math standards. I think one thing that's really important as we're looking at student learning. Uh, there's this balance between, we never want to over test students, but then we don't want to assess where they're at just based on one measure. You know, you want multiple measures because we all know that, you know, some assessments kids don't do well on. So we don't want to base everything solely off one assessment. So it's, it's finding that fine line of, uh, we don't want to have too many assessments, but we want to make sure we have multiple measures to really see where kids are at. And, uh, curriculum ju- usually is a unit based thing where at the end of the unit, they'll take an assessment. Uh, where its benchmarks are, are kind of the, the whole, the whole entirety of the, uh, standards for that grade level. So I think this would be one. Another idea I had was to, um. Each one of these has like sample tests and I thought it'd be interesting to like, on maybe the district webpage. Show the sample assessments of what these are. So that way parents and families can know like. When we say, oh, forty-four percent are proficient or not proficient, they could go and look at that assessment and get a sense of what are, what are they asking my kid? And then kind of be a partner in helping kind of expand the learning, uh, to the, to the home as well.
So are we of these levels? So level two and higher in Imagine Math, I'm assuming it starts at level one?
Yeah, uh, I believe Imagine is four, four levels. So that would be the, the nearly and above. So when they're in nearly, that means they get those kids some intervention. If they're below level two, that's like you are way below grade level.
So we have fifty-six percent way below grade level K through five.
Yes. So they would need special intervention. But I think, and, and I think that question highlights our need to really look at our elementaries and our intervention systems and English language arts and math. And I'm really hoping Midland, Texas brings some awesome, uh, expert, expertise in, uh. Because I, I know both our, our, our teachers, our admin are pouring just about everything they have into that. Um, so really need to look at. Hey, we're working hard. How do we get a little more juice, uh, out of that squeeze, uh, to make sure those interventions are, are really supporting student learning?
And is the dibbles reading and writing or what about writing levels and you take?
Dibbles is just reading. Um, let me pull Eric, let's see if this. What I can do is I will email writing. Um, I did, and I'm glad you asked. I did pull high school writing, uh, while, uh, we were talking ninth grade. Is at eighty-five point six four. That would be the winter, uh, writing sample. Tenth grade is at ninety-seven point two three, I believe. Eleventh grade is at ninety-four point three nine. And I need to check on that twelfth grade number. So I'll email that as well as the, um. Uh, ninth eighty-five point six four, tenth ninety-seven point two three. Eleventh ninety-four point three nine. And I need to double check the, uh, twelfth grade number because it was a blind. So. Um, and when I come in July. I'll break it down by grade level and just have that as a chart for you. If, if you like looking at the, the grade level distribution, that's easy to do. Um, so we can have that for you.
The eighth grade number, Joel, at fifty-nine percent. When did you pull that number? Cause that, I mean, you're drastically higher.
The school.
At the high school with the same group of kids.
And this year's ninth graders.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, not the, not the same kids. So. Uh, but that's really easy data to pull and, and look at grade level, just like the dibbles where you can see each grade level. So we can have that in that format for you. Um, come spring and I'll email you the, uh, elementary numbers tonight, tomorrow.
Any other questions for Joel? Thanks, Joel. Anna, we'll move on to your finance report. Now it's back to five point oh.
I don't have a lot of finance report. As we've seen, um, our revenue is coming in higher than expected. Our expenses are coming in lower than expected. Um, and that's what we was hoping for and, um. What will happen next month is I'll bring to you a budget change proposal, which is very normal. We do two or three times a year, a budget change. I'm sure you just haven't done it until, I'm close to the end of the year. Um, but that'll have some, um, proposed changes to the budget for some unexpected expenditures that we are seeing. And then it'll also have, uh, proposed like to increase the transfers out of the dental fund, which is how it'll fund maintenance reserve, et cetera. So, um, every school district that I know of does these at least once a year, if not more. And we in the past have done this pretty true, you know, two or three times. One through the council here. So I'll explain a lot more, but I just wanted to give you a, kind of a advanced warning that that'll be coming and you haven't seen that before. Did you have any questions on the financial report?
It's, are you bringing, what you're bringing to the next board meeting is what we're doing in our committee meeting?
It'll be made, the main regular board meeting.
But I, the budget, I'm sorry, the budget committee meeting in the end of April, is that what we're bringing in?
No, that'll be separate. Thank you for asking that. So we'll clarify that. The budget committee meeting on April twenty-fifth and thirty. Um, I should have those memorized in my world, but, um, those are to adopt, well, it's to approve. It's to have a budget committee approve the budget for the next school year, twenty-four, twenty-five. The budget that we see in front of us was, was adopted, adopted, approved last April, adopted last May or June. And things change over the course of a year. There's new information that comes out. And we like to be nimble and flexible and be able to change with information that we have. Um, otherwise the alternative is bureaucratic sluggishness and we don't want to be like that. So that's why we do these adjustments made here. So the main regular board meeting will be a resolution that will adjust the budget for the current fiscal year twenty. Twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-four.
Like to add that, that sounds like Mr. and Mrs. Bates really up their average teaching experience years out here. Brothers is double everyone else. It looks like the teaching experience. Any questions for Anna on finance?
We'll move to public comments. So we have Holly Kingsbury.
Um, hello, uh, Holly Kingsbury, one of the parents of our musical children. Um, I am bringing you the concern that our fence isn't completely enclosed, so kids can get to the highway. Um, we have. At least four kindergarteners that are coming in the next few years. Um, we have at least four kindergartners that are coming in the next few years. Um, and one of our son is um, on the autism spectrum. And I'm worried particularly about him escaping, if he's able to attend Brothers. So I'm the one that drew the straw to bring forward. Um, we really need to enclose the school. There's three exit points.
I'm assuming this would be one, you'd have to go out this door.
Yeah, right here. You can go around the front of the old red school, and then also out the back, right here.
Where is the fence that's open or not enclosed? All.
All those three.
All of them are open.
Yeah, you can go around the front of the red school. You can go between the gym and the, the current school, and then from this wall. Back to the existing fence, you can come around through the parking lot. Um, and also, I asked for opinions from the teachers. And that they would like to bring up that a six-foot fence, especially along the highway. Would be a nice addition. And growing up out here, the speed limit is four, no, it's fifty-five now, and people do not do that. Um, so that's a huge concern.
Leland, do we have the fencing here on a maintenance list?
That was my next question. Yeah, I was coming, I didn't know who I need to go to.
Leland is our maintenance, keeps track of the school. Um, fences, Leland is big on, so um, he's pretty up to date on where fences.
Okay.
Leland, do you have a plan for a six-foot fence on your list of, or?
My, on the, we'll put up six-foot fence continually around the entire, the, the entire property.
Okay.
So that's kind of what I will do, Joel.
Okay. Do we, I guess, what is the fencing that's out here that not six-foot existing?
So there's a, there's a six-foot fence out there, but that's a ODOT, um.
Oh, it's not our, okay.
Are you allowed to attach on to that? So at least you wouldn't have that side?
Yeah, okay.
And then back here, Leland, are, is this our fence that we need to just connect to?
Our property actually goes out past that fence. So as long as, as we're good with where the fence is at now, we would just extend that fence, so it's a six-foot fence all the way out.
And do we have plans in the near future to enclose these, or a way to enclose them until we can do a?
Well, the enclosures, the places where it's open, I can utilize. This out here is, is kind of tough, but we can lock that gate, but, but the spooks can still get through that gate. Everything else can be repaired. So, you know, in the short term, we can make sure that the, the repairs are done, but. And then the eventual plan would be to put a six-foot fence, and probably go with some soil here, so that it's completely enclosed.
Is that in the plans before then, start a next school year?
It's in the plans, but I haven't set a date to do it yet.
So do you think maybe we could do the safety side of it and get the temporary enclosures put up? Before we get a six-foot fence put all the way around in, in the near future for students out here? Okay. And it sounds like we'll need to get a hold of ODOT, Leland, or are you just gonna do a fence? Up to there and utilize their line as long as they're there? Okay, okay, okay. So Holly, if you also want to grab Leland's phone number, it sounds like Mr. Bates has it as well. Um, but um, I'm sure we'd be happy to continue communication in regards to closing off those entrances for now. And then get a game plan for an actual six-foot fence all the way around.
Can I just stand here, or? Uh, just a couple of quick things. Uh, thank you, board, for being willing to serve. Uh, the other thing is, uh, I noticed in the past few meetings. You've changed the public comments to there, and I like that. I, I think it was a good move. That's it.
We will revisit that, um, hopefully in June, July, when Dr. Skinner's here. And um, so we may look at moving that, um, but we kind of tabled that till, till we have another discussion about it. So it's good to hear some feedback, so, thank you. Okay, any other discussion pieces, some kind of questions?
I just really like to thank, uh, Dr. Skinner, my husband, Michael, for coming all the way out to be in person, to sign your contract. It shows your dedication and your time to our school, and we're very, very grateful and thankful. And, and you picked the meeting all the way out in Brothers. So you, you got a tour on your way out, so thank you for coming.
Thank you for having us. Absolutely want to start off on the right foot and get to know everyone, and just so honored, again, thank you. And thank you to Brothers for hosting us, so much appreciated.
Yeah, and in a special thank you to Mr. Mrs. Jones, all the chair setup and. The things in the treats and their list of things that they accomplish every day, just, they are amazing, and driving through the work of the kids, so.
Your music is beautiful. Yeah, yeah, you can sing.
We are also really thankful for all of the board and staff to come all the way to Brothers. I think we have all but one family at this meeting right now. So if we're looking at statistics in terms. We really appreciate you guys uh, coming way out here, and it really matters, and it's a good omen to you that you start here.
Okay, so our upcoming dates, we have, um, as Anna mentioned, we have our budget committee meeting, April twenty-fifth, um, six-thirty PM at the district office. We have our next school board work session on April twenty-ninth, also at the district office, uh, four PM on that. Uh, we started it earlier on those, and then um, we have an executive session following our work session that night. We have our second budget committee meeting scheduled for April thirtieth at six-thirty at the district office. And my understanding is, Anna, that's uh, tentative if everything is not resolved on the twenty-fifth, or both meetings happening.
You could approve the budget the first meeting that you so choose.
Okay, and then if not, we move to the thirtieth. Okay, I wanted to make sure about that. And our next school board meeting is May thirteenth at six-thirty at the district office. And our last listening session of the school year is May twentieth, six-thirty at the district office. And we have no school Memorial Day on May twenty-seventh, so.